Can you please take the roll call?
Of course, how about, um, Board Member Jeff Bennett. Board Member Deirdre Brown.
Here.
Board Member Elizabeth Collins.
Here.
Board Member Judith Oliver.
Oh.
That's why we're here.
Here.
Board Member Jack.
Here.
Board Member Phil Gilbert. Board Member John Spock.
Here.
Board Member Ryan.
Here.
Here.
Uh, we want to welcome tonight, uh, the Columbia High School Excelsior Singers. They've been generous enough to share their talents. Yeah.
We'll get up.
Yeah, we'll get up.
Thank you.
Bill, please. Y'all can move that up. Yes.
Hello, everyone. Uh, this is, my name is Nick Diaz. This is, um, Excelsior Singers or really kind of two-thirds of Excelsior Singers. The other third, there's like something going around and, um, but luckily for us, they kind of got sick in like equal amounts per section, so it's good. We are going to sing a beautiful piece called Earth Song for you first. Next, we'll sing, uh, South African greeting song, Lo No Lo Fatsa.
Now I'd like to motion to enter into executive session at 6:42 PM to discuss attorney-client matters, personnel, negotiations, and HIBs. The length of executive session is estimated to be 75 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business where formal action will be taken. May I have a second? Thank you, Saka Gable. Uh, all in favor? Okay, let's go.
Okay, everyone. We are now, seems we're charging. We are now back in session. Do we kick this thing off?
There you go.
Okay, it's just gonna be one of those nights. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, I don't know what's going on. It's not working. I'd like to make a motion to approve the prior board meeting minutes on February 27, 2025. And that would include the executive session minutes as well. Do I have a second? Thank you. Board member Bennett, all in favor, please raise your hand. Great, thank you. The minutes have been approved. And now we will have student update. Thank you.
All right, we have some recognitions. If you tuned into last month's board meeting, you may have seen a fantastic group of students from Maplewood Middle School present a solution to traffic issues during drop-off and dismissals through a project challenge from the New Jersey School Boards Association's Steam Tank Challenge. This is obviously the Steam Tank team from Maplewood Middle School. And thanks to their innovative thinking, Maplewood Township and Maplewood Police are implementing their proposal for a one-way traffic calming plan during peak hours to enhance student safety. Well done to the MMS Steam Tank students and their teacher, Ms. Zavaki. I also want to congratulate Maya Kaplan for being named Columbia's 2025 Unsung Hero by the Essex County School Boards Association and the New Jersey School Boards Association. Maya is a CHS senior who's being recognized for her dedication to supporting neurodivergent students. She spent much of her free time working with Columbia High School's Special Education Program, particularly with students in the Applied Behavior Analysis Program. And earlier this month, Mrs. Bodnar presented the award to Maya and highlighted her empathy, loyalty, and commitment to inclusivity. Maya plans to pursue a career in special education, aiming to make a lasting impact on students with special needs. I want to congratulate Columbia High School Maya Berkowitz and sophomore Abby Gettinger for receiving awards for their photography pieces at the Pingery School on February 28th. The 29th Annual Pingery Student Photography Exhibition was on view in the Hotstetter Art Center Gallery through early March. Nearly 200 digital and traditional film-based photographs showcased the best work of students from seven private and public high schools in the region. Next, the Unsung Shiro's 2025 Celebration at the South Orange Performing Arts Center last week honored a remarkable woman for their dedication to the community, and three individuals from SOMSD were honored. Columbia High School freshman, Student Council President Violet Kessler was recognized for her leadership and advocacy for youth. CHS Counseling Secretary Ms. Petracchio was celebrated for her commitment to education and volunteerism. And Ms. Nicole Josie, co-president of the SOMSD Presidents' Council, was honored for her tireless work in advancing inclusion and equity in SOMA. Their contributions continue to inspire and uplift the community. Congratulations and thank you for your service. I also want to congratulate Columbia High School's APR students on the return of their annual showcase at SOPAC. This exhibition, running until April 26th, highlights their incredible talent across various mediums, from paintings to digital art. And under the guidance of visual arts teacher Ms. Cappucci, these students have worked tirelessly to refine their craft and share their creative voices with the community. Great work. This past winter, South Orange Village and the Baird Community Center helped our South Orange Middle School immensely during a successful evacuation and reunification exercise. We especially thanked Chief Murillo and Sergeant Lenero from the South Orange Police Department, as well as Community Center Director Matt Gray for their fast-acting support. Their flexibility and willingness to collaborate on such short notice ensured a smooth transition for students and staff, providing them stability and care during the security procedure. Thank you. And then finally, congratulations to the Columbia High School Girls Fencing Team for securing an impressive second-place finish at the state championships, delivering many hard-fought spars throughout the seasons. Their dedication and perseverance throughout the season have been truly commendable, and we are very proud of their athletic integrity.
So Oliver stole my thunder once again. We do want to shout out our girls fencing team. Mr. Sanchez classified them as a Cinderella team. We want to let you know how very proud we are of all of you, and how proud we are of the coaches. And we know getting that far is a heck of a lot of hard work. So we just wanted to give you a heck of a round of applause and have you stand up, please, and just take that applause in, because you deserve it. Thank you, ladies. Wonderful job. Unbelievable. Thank you. You made us proud. She's here. Carissa here? She is. Perfect. One more wonderful shout-out, aside from the great news. No, she's not. Okay. Coach? Yep, you want to? So we have certificates for the girls. A small thank you for everything you've done this school year. And I know, trust me, we know the work you put into everything, so thank you very much. Coach Winston? Oh, the mic's gone. I think it's gone. Yeah. Is the mic on?
Good evening, everyone. And as Mr. Bing said, they were the Cinderella team. They defeated the ranked two-team Montclair in advance to the next round, defeated the ranked number three team. We fell short in the last round against Livingston. So again, let's give them a huge round of applause, because we were ranked number seven. Starting off with the Sabre team, Carol Agila, 11th grader. Madeline Benson, 11th grader. Going to our Foil team, Elise Benjamin, 10th grader. Samara Bird, 11th grader. Teagan Feyman, 9th grader. Simone Swingle, 9th grader. Malaya Valentin, 10th grader. For our Epi level, Tia Goodson, who is also going to Wright University as a fencing player. Soraila Iyangar, 12th grader.
We have one more?
Yep. Sorry, I couldn't see. Sorry. Shimly Zing, our foil, 10th grader. And I know she's recording right now, but without this manager, a lot of our games will not be recorded. Sonia Zenobi. And I got to give a special shout-out to this team member. She was our clinch, clinch fencer for all three rounds in the States. We were tied. We fell short the second round. We lost 14-13, but we advanced 14-13, 14-13. We lost 13-14. Delina Oradu, 12th grader, Epi. Our superstar.
Great job, ladies!
One, two, three.
Love you!
Three, two, one. Make a smile. Thank you.
So happy!
Okay.
it is important to recognize the progress that has been made in creating a more structured and predictable environment at CHS. As student representatives, Oliver and I have been dedicated to ensuring that student voices are heard and that concerns of our peers are brought to the attention of the Board of Education. This month, we have focused on gathering insights into the current state of Columbia High School through a comprehensive student survey. Our goal is to provide both qualitative and quantitative feedback that will allow the Board to make informed decisions that reflect the needs and concerns of the student body. The survey covers a range of topics, including school security, academic programming, and overall student preparedness for higher education. With the help of Principal Sanchez, we were able to distribute the survey via email, and so far, we have received 155 responses. However, we are actively working to increase participation, as a larger sample size will undoubtedly help us present a more complete and representative picture of student sentiment. Even at this stage, the results have already provided valuable statistics for key issues at CHS. Here are some of the most notable findings so far. 81.9% of students believe that the removal and consolidation of course options for next year will negatively impact the academic environment at CHS. 50.3% of students do not feel that the presence of security guards contributes to a safer school environment. Only 16.8% of respondents feel that CHS is adequately preparing students for higher education. Beyond the numerical data, the survey also included an open-ended section where students could share their thoughts on additional concerns and areas for improvement. We received 75 qualitative responses covering a wide range of topics such as concerns over budgeting, the role of artificial intelligence in classrooms, and a desire for greater transparency from the Board of Education regarding policy changes and the decision-making process. These responses provide valuable context to the numerical data, offering a deeper understanding of the challenges students are facing. As we continue to collect more responses, we will refine our findings and provide a more comprehensive report in the coming weeks. Our hope is that this data will serve as a useful tool for the Board in making decisions that directly impact students' experiences. We appreciate your willingness to engage with student concerns and look forward to working together to create a stronger and more supportive learning environment at Columbia High School. Thank you.
I'll open up for any questions, but I want to say thank you so much for the updates and for doing that survey. And hopefully you'll get some more respondents. And then it would be great to get like export, you know, of all those responses when done. Obviously, your report at an upcoming meeting, but for the Board to be able to just see those responses as well and whatever. Is it a Google survey that you did? Okay, great. I love Google surveys. So yeah, you'll be able to export that for us. Were there any questions?
I'll just note that I'm also really excited to hear about this survey. And we talked about it when we were able to have you guys into our policy meeting a few months back. And I'm really interested in hearing specifically those thoughts that the respondents had regarding things that they think the Board could be doing differently to communicate information about how decision-making works, which can include, you know, trying to involve students in part of that and having that dialogue. So really interested in, to the degree that you have specific recommendations that you can call from the responses. We'd love to take a look at that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's interesting to hear already kind of like the initial responses that you've gotten. And just to kind of build on what Board Member Meyer was saying, I think it might also be nice to create more like bidirectional structures, right? Because I think admittedly, many, there's often confusion about like, what does a Board of Education do? What do we not do? What are our responsibilities? What can we share? What can't we share? And so I also think it might be a potential opportunity for us, too, to think about how do we have or share that a little bit better with students, too? So there is clarity leading into. And then to Will's point, like, what are those areas of concern? And then how do we better involve or create those opportunities, too? So, thank you.
Okay, great. So next, it goes to Mr. Moody for your business update. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nubia. This is a short update regarding construction, but I will power through it. We've got some good news on a few schools. Essentially, at Seth Boyden and Tuscan School, final change orders have been submitted and are being reviewed by the district. At the Marshall School, final punch list, 99% completed. Closeout of documents, 70% completed. So the existing spregular piping repair damage change order is being sent out for signature and processing. And three sheet rock column enclosures located at the window wall are to be constructed over spring break. At Montrose School, final punch list, 99% completed. Enclose out documents, 70% completed. Also, at Columbia High School, the A-Wing Science Rooms are underway. The Media Center is completed and turned over, and the Commons Area is completed and turned over. So those are in use. Roof's coating is underway at the B-Wing Areas, and that continues. And renovation of existing guidance area is ongoing. At Maplewood Middle School, architectural punch list items are 90% completed, but more work to continue. Received and started work on the mechanical engineering and plumbing punch list. The FA trouble issues replaced water-damaged smoke detector on second-floor corridor. Continued updating graphics on the building management system and integrating boilers. Addressed cafeteria and gym roof leaks and wrapped up remaining roof work. Started submitting closeout documentation. And based on the forecasted weather conditions, scupper change order work will begin on the cafeteria roof. And planning to remove construction trailer on Monday, March 24th. So that took place already. South Orange Middle School Electric Service, Bennett, they cut in and submitted the PSENG for installation of the new water meters and energizing up to the appropriate devices. Updated electrical drawings are completed. Meetings need to be scheduled for review on-site with contractor. Then lastly, the South Orange Middle School, building permits have been issued. Completed demolition for the two new bathrooms. New doors are on and installation will begin in the next week. Plumbing inspection for the new bathroom scheduled for next week. New electrical panels were delivered to the site, and they're marking out areas in the classrooms where the VUVs will be placed and installed, the ventilation units. And selective investigative demo work for the new RTUs in different areas. And that kind of concludes the construction update.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, Regina?
Thank you for that. Do we have any idea when the girls locker room at CHS is slated to start work on?
I don't have that at the top of mind at the moment.
Okay.
It's something that I could definitely check into.
Yeah, yeah. And I know I was going to bring it up to Bill as well. It just kind of hit me while you were going through all of that. So, thank you.
So I'll note that.
And do you know when, what the status is for the furniture for the library at CHS?
I do know that it's been ordered. POs came past my desk, and we actually interfaced with the different organizations who are delivering that furniture. And I know that it was a significant lead time. I believe it is in April, but I don't have the specific date.
Okay, but it should be April?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's great.
And I just wanted to thank you and Mr. Giglio for organizing the tours of the schools. I was able to tour Maplewood Middle School and see, you know, work that's being done, work that needs to be done in certain places. And it was really helpful to just lay eyes on some of the pieces that the students came and spoke about last time. So I really appreciate that. And I welcome any opportunities in the future for any other, you know, if there's any other work, that would be great for us to take a look at.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. The sentiments of our middle school students were heartfelt. We wanted to be certain to, you know, engage in that bidirectional sharing of information. And then also, it's great that you've been able to lay some eyes on it as well. As you know, it's, the maintenance effort is constant and ongoing. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update and for all the questions, everyone. Now do the Board President update. I'd like to share a high-level recap of our efforts. The Board requested that the district create a fact sheet that reminded our school community of our DEI and integration policies, which remain unchanged, along with the state laws that mandate diverse curriculums, such as the Amistad Law and the LGBTQI+ and Persons with Disabilities Law. The letter reaffirmed our commitment to fostering a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment for every student we serve. This document was sent to the school community by our superintendent on March 4th. I'll provide a brief update on our progress toward the Board goals for the 2024-2025 school year. Quarterly retreats: We've held two productive retreats focused on board governance, curriculum oversight, student achievement, and data-driven decision-making. In July, we'll convene again to review our self-evaluation, which we'll be doing in a few weeks, and refine our oversight practices in collaboration with the superintendent to achieve our effective board oversight goal. Maintaining NJSBA board certification, we have secured the necessary points and are awaiting final results from the NJSBA's wellness review of our policy manual. Upon completion, we will officially receive our board certification. Our board annual agenda: We continue to follow the NJSBA standard board calendar. Progress is reviewed regularly at exec committee meetings to ensure alignment and accountability. Development of best practices: Through our Policy and Governance Committee, along with our Board Governance Manual, which was new this year, we have discussed ways to streamline our board meetings and board workflow. Committee alignment and reporting: We created a suggested template for committee readouts at board meetings, as well as implemented SOPs, Mr. Bing's favorite phrase these days, for committee structures with respect to length of committees, meeting length of our committee meetings, ensuring goals are covered and methods to track members' questions before and after committee meetings. And lastly, committee related to students and families. Recognizing that the superintendent has launched a children's cabinet with town leaders and stakeholders to address student resource gaps and needs from K to 12th grades, the Board opted not to duplicate these efforts. Cabinet meetings have already begun, and more information will be forthcoming by the superintendent. Upcoming at the April 24th board meeting: Reminder that there is a budget adoption vote. We're also in the process of scheduling Michael Alf's to come back of the Alf's Group to return and present the Year Four Intentional Integration Initiative recap. Finally, a reminder that our superintendent shared with the school community via a letter a few weeks ago that we agreed upon our salary increases for the three years of our teachers' contract and are continuing to work on the salary guise with Somaia. Because we are under a gag order, we cannot share more details publicly. And now I'll read the Board's president's statement. "The school board meeting is a business meeting in public and not a meeting with the public. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, it has thoroughly been reviewed by the administration, the superintendent of schools, and the Board of Education, after which it is placed on the agenda for board discussion and action at a public meeting." Okay, now we will have hearing of individuals and delegations. Yeah, I've got it. Thank you. Yes. Thank you for coming in person and joining us online this evening. The South Orange Maplewood Board of Education values public involvement and respects that you've taken the time to address the Board at tonight's meeting. As this is the Board's business meeting, a friendly reminder to please be respectful as we take into consideration your valuable input, which will inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committees. The Board does have time limits by policy, and it will be enforcing those to enable as many people to speak as possible this evening. Each individual will be given three minutes to speak. The first public comment period is usually limited to one hour, with priority often given to items related to the meeting agenda. And the second public comment period may be limited to 30 minutes." Okay, so first, we have Erin Siders. Thank you.
Hey, it's both of us. I wrote us in first and second. Jocelyn Ryan and Erin Siders. We are the current co-chairs of the Schools Committee of the South Orange Maplewood Community Coalition on Race. And we've just been a bit concerned lately over some of the comments we've been hearing. Some here, but mostly in the recent community forums hosted by Mr. Bing and Mr. Moody regarding transportation and budget, regarding the integration initiative. And we feel that maybe people, the community, needs reminding of why it is that we are doing this. Also, we wanted to ask that the notes of the Rutgers Implementation Committee be made public, like the notes of the standing committees and like the notes of the Special Ed Committee were before it became a standing committee. Here.
All right. Good evening. If you ask South Orange Maplewood residents why they moved here, one of the top reasons is always the diversity. Celebrating diversity seems to be acceptable when talking about various housing stock, houses of worship, or restaurant options. But when we talk about diversity in our schools and making sure our school demographics reflect our community, we hear yes, but. I believe in integration, but my child needs to attend this particular school because. There is no room for yes, but when it comes to integration. Either you're 100% for it, or you're 100% against it, period. Some of the reasons stated are that it's inconvenient, or because the cost of transportation has to go up to make it work. If you're against it for any reason, then you're choosing segregation. Brown versus the Board of Education was 71 years ago. Two years ago, a New Jersey Supreme Court judge found that the state had a duty to address de facto segregation in our schools. Before the Intentional Integration Initiative, we had two schools that were 70% white and one school that was roughly 70% black. That's what happens when you have neighborhood schools, and that is de facto segregation. For 28 years, the Coalition on Race has been pushing for a truly equitable school district. We know that this work is hard, it's messy, it's complicated, it's uncomfortable, and it's challenging. But when you believe something is vital, important, necessary, and valued, you have to be all in, even for the parts that are messy. We are all in. We hope that the district, the Board, the community share our view, and that there is no point at which integration isn't worth the fight. For the sake of our students, present and future, don't dismantle the good work because it's hard. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Next, we have Gabrielle. Thank you. I couldn't read your handwriting. Sorry, I didn't have your last name there.
Apologies. Gabriel Tarot. Hi, everyone. Esteemed Board members, Superintendent, Audience Members. I'm Gabriel Tarot. I'm a junior at Columbia High School. And some of you might recognize me, not least from an hour ago, an hour and a half ago at this point, when I sang with Excelsior's for you guys. And I just wanted to say thank you for having us, first of all. And I also wanted to thank you, on behalf of all of the arts programs, for your expeditious work, your expeditious beginning of work on the stage, because we really do appreciate the fact that you guys take this seriously. But unfortunately, there is another challenge facing another program, which I'm a member of, the orchestra program. You see, there are imminent funding cuts set for the summer orchestra camp. And, well, the vast majority of students in this program rely on free and reduced lunch. And we believe, we as an orchestra program, as a community, believe that it would be disastrous to force people to pay for this program, which is what has been proposed. In addition, the proposal is to cut the hours of the program.
Thank you. I couldn't, I couldn't read your handwriting, sorry, I didn't have your last name there.
Apologies. Gabriel Tarot. Hi, everyone. Esteemed board members, superintendent, audience members. I'm Gabriel Tarot. I'm a junior at Columbia High School, and some of you might recognize me, not least from an hour ago, an hour and a half ago at this point, when I sang with Excelsior's for you, for you guys. And I just wanted to say thank you for having us, first of all. And I also wanted to thank you on behalf of all of the arts programs for your expeditious work, your expeditious beginning of work on the stage, because we, we really do appreciate the fact that this, that you guys take this seriously. But unfortunately, there is another challenge facing another program, which I'm a member of, the orchestra program. You see, there are imminent funding cuts set for the summer, for the summer orchestra camp, and, well, the vast majority of students in this program rely on free and reduced lunch, and we believe, we as an orchestra program, as a community, believe that it would be disastrous to force people to pay for this program, which is what has been proposed. In addition, there is a, the proposal is to cut the hours of the program, which would also be, which would also be an unfair burden on those who, whose families work. And to be honest, this is an access, this is an, excuse me, an access and equity issue. And we hope you take, we treat it as such. This, the entire CHS arts community, not least myself, urges you to reconsider what would undoubtedly be a devastating blow to the summer orchestra program. Thank you. The two changes, cut hours and making people pay for it. It is currently free. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just looking online, and I don't see any, any online people, so that concludes Public Okay, so now committee reports. Much of the work our board does happens in committees, and the results are brought to the board meeting for action. Detailed minutes of each committee meeting are posted on our website. I suppose responded Public Speaks, but Rutgers is every other two months. We'll have a Rutgers meeting in April, so we would only have one Rutgers recap online right now. More to come. We'll now hear from the chairs of each of our committees with a few brief highlights from this month's meetings, and we can start, I think last night we started, so we'll start for, with you. Thank you.
Okay, so the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on March 10th at 6:30 PM with all board, board committee members present, along with Ms. Bodnar, Mr. Bing, and Dr. Wable. We discussed progress and updates related to district goals, including the following highlights. Regarding Goal One, college and career readiness, we heard more details about the plans for middle school math, including the creation of a student uplifting team to encourage students to take higher-level courses. We heard about the use of data tools like Linkit for student placement recommendations and parent involvement in course selection, because although the district will have data to use to make math placement recommendations for middle school, parents are still able to make that decision for their children. At future meetings, we plan to take a look at any available data comparing the district recommendations to the parent selections, and we received an update on the selection process for new on-grade level curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade courses. Regarding Goal Four, family and community engagement, we discussed the upcoming curriculum nights for math and social studies, as well as participant survey feedback. We didn't review any new policies for adoption this month, and there are no curricula up for board approval. We did discuss CNI-related budget items. Highlights include new allocations for next school year, approximately $300,000 for middle school math, $45,000 towards freshman academy. Future funding in school year 26, 27 will focus on high school STEM. There are no anticipated CNI reductions for next year. This includes programming as well as supplies. In addition, we received and discussed other key updates. The CHS scheduling process is on track so far and without issues. Hope it keeps, you know, on that course. The district is exploring a K-8 cellphone ban and yonder bags for freshmen. Planning for freshman academy continues in order to support students at this transitional stage, including a new parent advisory committee, as well as gathering broader stakeholder input and developing a replicable framework for future improvements. Another one of those SOPs, Mr. Bing. Regarding chronic absenteeism, the district continues to monitor data and refine intervention strategies, and will provide regular updates to the committee. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April 7th at 6:30 PM. Are there any questions? A full recap of our meeting can be found on the district website.
Thank you. All right, the Special Services Committee met on March 18th. All members were present with Superintendent Bing, Ms. Jessa Maria, and Dr. Gilbert. We began with a CPAC check-in with their VP of Policy Initiatives, Ms. Nassberg, reinforcing our commitment to Goal 4.2, which is focusing on increasing our collaboration by engaging CPAC more readily. In this meeting, we discussed our extended school year. The district discussed their plans for this program, ensuring that it would include clear communication, especially as we are shifting from a five-day to a four-day model this year. The dates are June 30th to July 31st, Monday through Thursday. Preschool through grade five is at Clinton, and grade six through 12 at Maplewood Middle. We also discussed progress reports, and efforts are underway to improve the consistency and timeliness of special education progress report with enhanced training and quality checks. And finally, we discussed transition to high school for students with IEPs. Steps are being taken to strengthen support for students who are transitioning to our high school by ensuring appropriate staff attendance at IEP meetings. Following this discussion, we reviewed a committee goal that is also aligned there with District Goal 4.2 on community engagement. And this goal focuses on developing an experience survey for families to establish a baseline measure of their experience with things like the CST process, inclusion, academic, social, emotional, and behavioral supports. Final feedback was provided, and the survey was sent out this morning, and we look forward to hearing from our families. As an instructional update, as established, there will be no changes for the K-5 ICRS model. The paired model will continue, and case managers will continue, as always, to make placement decisions that are based on individual student needs. We did notice in the process and discussion of this over the last couple of months that there are disparities in instructional minutes as they're allocated across our elementary schools, so we're also noting that and going to move it to CNI for discussion. We talked about our professional development plan. So the committee had requested a review of professional development that was provided this past school year, during which no specific professional development funds were allocated for special services, but internal no-cost PD opportunities were provided. All special education staff participated in PD offerings for general education staff as well. The 25, 26 budget does include funding that will be allocated for training through the Institute for Multisensory Education, classroom management, co-teaching strategies, related services, and the continuation of the collaborative problem-solving training via more in-person coaching models. Additionally, as it stands, funding has been allocated to try and get all of our K-5 ELA POR teachers to receive their certification from that Institute of Multisensory Education, and we're also exploring a partnership with F T U for Orton Gillingham. Because it's the season, we did talk at length about the budget. One of our goals is efficient use of funds and educational resources for all students. We talked about the goal of conducting an internal audit and analysis of our legal settlement, settlement and out-of-district spend. The administration discussed having our special education attorney provide a review of our legal expenditures for the committee to review. The district's also making projections for 25, 26 based on current and anticipated needs for paraprofessionals. The administration believes keeping a close eye on projections and working alongside our school-based teams during the scheduling process will help ensure the paraprofessional support is effectively distributed and used. Additionally, with respect to the budget, the district is reviewing paraprofessional contracts alongside all other privatized services and conducting an analysis of internal staff members as it relates to certifications in special education that could assist in filling vacancies from within. For policy, we reviewed in a prior meeting, not this one, but we did review some mandated regulations that are up tonight for first read. And the win for this month was that Seth Woden has been successfully using the collaborative proactive solutions method, and they were very excited to share their successes, and we applaud them for that. It's great. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 3rd, confirming, because we did have to toy with our dates. And as we will vote on tonight, I'm looking forward to having board member Saka Gabel officially join as a standing member of this committee. I think it will increase our synergy with CNI and be really effective. Any questions? A full recap of this meeting is available on the district website under our board committee section. Thank you.
Go ahead. All right, just making sure. The municipal partners meeting was on Monday, March 24th. The attendees were myself, a board member, Bill Wukapadia, superintendent, Mr. Bing. In spirit was Ms. Nubia Deval Wilson. South Orange Township was Mayor, Mayor Sheena Column, village trustee, Dr. Livia Lewis Chang. On the Maplewood side, Mayor Nancy Adams, town council, Deb Engel, and Pat Ware, our business, their business administrator. It was a continuation of the, of the school tour of the MMS steam tank presentations. So they presented to the township, which was pretty wild to see, considering what we saw the, a couple of weeks ago from their presentation, how much has it evolved from the flow diagrams to the solutions to the actual footage. It was pretty impressive, and it's good to see the students in action. I think we should make that presentation be more available to the public, because it's pretty, it's pretty self-explanatory, it's a good tour. As it relates to the budget, Superintendent Bing gave an overview of where we are with the township, which led to the upcoming scheduling with the Board of School Estimate Meeting that we are trying to schedule now for April 7th as a preliminary session, a second meeting that is being scheduled for later in April. The meetings will be public. The F F F, F F T Committee and the B A will be putting together a summary proposal to be sent to Boz prior to the, prior to the 7th. Board member Nubia and Bill are working with, with Mr. Moody on what will be sent over for consideration. The focus will be on projects with the most budgetary implications, facilities, transportation, special services, were a few items mentioned. Also, Mr. Bing gave an update on the Yonder Program, which was just mentioned earlier. The approximately 147 students from MMS has participated in the Yonder Program so far, and we are considering expanding that to the freshman academy next year. That's all we got on that one, because it was a lot around the, the Board of School Estimate and that process of trying to wrangle everybody together to get that meeting in time. So keep it posted. Any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment along the lines of the, the steam tank challenge, which was fabulous. I just wanted to note that we have Resolution 4738-F tonight, which includes a donation from the Achieve Foundation of $3,000 to keep that going at the middle schools, so.
Hello. Sorry, I was updating in, in real time, because I, yeah. So the F F T Committee met on March 12th with board members Meyer, Callahan, Bennett, and myself in attendance. I did want to start off and share that our own Tom Giglio has been nominated as Facility Manager of the Year. So big, and he's gonna get it. I want him to get it. And I did just want to thank Tom and Frank, Tom Giglio, Frank Sanchez, for the tour of the facilities. You know, I tell you, so much passion and work goes into keeping that very old building in shape, and, and it was great, you know, someone who graduated in 2004 to see so many things not changed, and so many things also changed and really updated, and the student center and the, the old pool is just really phenomenal. So awesome job to that team. The committee received a construction update, as you heard from Mr. Moody earlier, I'm not going to do that again. We also received an update that the Department of Environmental, of Environmental Protection found that Ritzer Field is not considered a wetland. Mr. Moody presented the 2025-2026 tentative budget PowerPoint. We discussed a potential smartphone ban at MMS and Soms for the 2025-26 school year, and the Yonder packs for freshman academy. And for those who don't know, that are these little bags. You put your phone in it, lock it, and then at the end of the day, you know, you get that phone back. Lastly, I want to highlight that The Wizard of Oz will be performed at Soms April 5th, 6th, and, 4th, 5th, and the 6th, so get your tickets if you haven't already. And these are my highlights, but for more details, go to the district website for a full recap of the meeting in the board committee section. The next meeting will be April 9th. And Regina, we are going to find out when the, the CHS Girls Locker Room is updated. That is very important, so we'll make sure we get that. And that is it. If anyone has questions.
Thank you, Bill. So I just wanted to ask a question about Ritzer, not considered a wetland. So what, what are the next steps? As we know, when we last went to Boz, that wasn't included. And by the way, this could be Mr. Moody, Mr. Bing, whoever wants to jump in there, as we know that, that budget was removed from what we ended up getting. So what are the next steps now that we know it's not a wetlands? It sounds like Spiesel is researching other things, but then what?
Yeah, I think we do want to just verify that there's no flood hazard. You know, if we do turf, we, we want to make sure that there's proper runoff, you know? But I, I do think that the plans have changed a little bit, I don't know, or what should we?
Yeah. Yeah, no, he's, oh, come on. Oh, it's fine. We still, he still has parallel plans, so I think next step would be working with Tom and then bringing it to the board. Take a look at what, what they have and what we're thinking currently and what the costs are, because obviously the costs have changed moving forward. And then we make some decisions, but I think he's ready to show a couple of parallel plans, the original, and then one revised, and then some cost breakdowns. He's, he drew out both, so it's, it's, he showed us about a month ago, yeah.
That's it.
All right, thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met last on March 4th, seems like an eternity ago, but here we are. It was myself, board member Brown, board member Bennett, board president, Jubal Wilson, and our terrific S L T staff. We opened the session up with a presentation and discussion with our sort of special-duty attorney, David Rubin, who came in and discussed the status of the executive orders and current environment we have with the federal government right now. The executive orders had come through, and at that point, the pending dismantling of the USDAO, talking about what the implications would be for our district, when to expect things. And the long and short is that it's not a great outlook, but also not an immediate sky falling, so we're, we're grateful to have, you know, excellent counsel on that front. Tonight, we have a number of policies that came out of that meeting for second read. There is a policy on athletic department and coaches, one on volunteer athletic coaches, one on school volunteers, one on ID badges for teaching staff, and one on ID badges for support staff. All of these came through first read at our last regular board meeting. We have no changes, and they're being put forward for adoption this evening. We do not have any policies put up for first read this evening. We do have four regulations that are up for first read. We haven't had regulations on the docket for a while because it has, we have sort of a dry spell in getting regulations to come through from the administration. And it is terrific that, as a result of the very concerted and focused effort and some spare time that the administration somehow found, they were able to push a few through, the first of a number that we do expect to come because we are still fairly in arrears in our regulations. So we have four special education regulations that come through. Now, regulations are created by the district. The board does not create them, but in discussion, we did give feedback on a few, and the district was very generous and collaborative in making changes to add some additional protections for some of our students with disabilities in these regulations, which we were very happy about. So those are up for first read this evening, and then they would be adopted at our following meeting. There was one policy that you'll see within our minutes, which you should read for more information, was considered for first read. That is the acceptable use of generative AI as it relates to students. That policy is brand-new and evolving, the same way that generative AI like ChatGPT is, and we have a few more items to discuss there, so that's going back to committee and may be up for first read at our next meeting. We also discussed a few other policies. Among them were our policy 5530 on substance abuse, making sure that we are implementing that policy, and also that the language there aligns with our code of conduct and the policies we need in place, especially considering substance use issues at CHS and off-campus. We had a mention at our last regular board meeting regarding our corporal punishment policies, 3217 and 4217, and the interplay that those have with policy 5561 on the use of restraint for students with disabilities, which is not explicitly discussed in that policy, but still exists. And at that meeting, I completely reversed the discussion of how those two interplay, which I'm correcting right here. So those are a piece that we've sent over to the Special Services Committee for further discussion on. And lastly, we discussed policy 2418 regarding Section 504, and the need to have a regulation created for that to implement certain pieces of how those procedures work. That's one of the many policies for which we need a regulation and don't have one. It is on the radar of special services to get done. And finally, we discussed a number of the standard operating procedures that the district is developing. We asked We asked for a list and discussed some of the SOPs currently in process. There are SOPs being developed for physical plant department, workers' compensation procedures, district social media management, Office of Assistant Superintendent regarding dating violence and suicide risk assessment, and safety and security regarding our key card controls, school closing procedures, bomb threats, and behavior threat assessment, as well as the special education process. So those are in progress, and our committee continues to track their development and that of other SOPs. And that's all I have. Are there any questions? One question.
There's always got to be one, right? Just a point of clarity with SOPs. I guess similar almost to a policy, and I know, I'm only speaking to special education right now. I know we have planned review of particular SOPs happening. Would that, is that something that we envision happening across relevant committees as SOPs are developed? So say one kind of has, you know, some connection to FFT. Okay. Just from a process perspective. Thank you.
And no, for the record, the superintendent is nodding his head. Yeah. Yes.
The Personnel Committee met on Monday, March 24th at 6:30 p.m. In attendance were Board Members Kapadia, Sackett Gabel, and myself, along with Mr. Bing, Dr. Gilbert, and Mr. Adidoyan. As usual, I'm just going to say, much of what was discussed is confidential. However, the public-facing minutes on the district website include as much information as we can divulge. Among the topics we discussed were district goals and year one of the five-year workforce diversity plan progress. So District Goal 3.1 was to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. That has now been completed. The staff survey closed on March 18th, 2025. Mr. Adidoyan met with the vendor earlier this week to review the data, and he will be prepared to share more information at the April committee meeting, and then we will share with the full board. Still in progress, District Goal 3.2 partner with minority-serving institutions. Mr. Adidoyan and his team have been working hard to expand their partnership with Montclair State, with student teachers. They, I think at the last meeting, I talked a little bit more about the cohort of teachers involved in an educational leadership program. One of the things they are also looking to do is to help our current staff members gain special education certifications. And he's also looking to potentially partner with Orange School District to kind of put together one big cohort, so they can move forward with that. Another update on that, Rutgers-Newark, I think that was in talks at the last meeting, and so they've officially formed a partnership around student teachers from their urban teacher program. One of the things the committee asked for as a follow-up was just providing data on the student teachers that we have in our district currently, trying to understand kind of the student-teacher-to-teacher conversion rate and pipeline, especially as we all have seen, you know, the teacher shortage across the country, less and less people going into the, unfortunately, into education. So, you know, based on the data, maybe we can find some information there. District Goal 3.3, developing targeted recruitment materials, still in progress. They've hired a professional videographer to engage in some of the services, some teachers volunteering to participate, and, you know, the last thing I asked, just ensuring that the initiative has stayed within their budget. Moving on, we had a discussion just in terms of tracking staff evaluations. SLT continues to monitor the progress, and I know that between HR and CNI, they're having the necessary discussions with appropriate leadership to ensure meeting the deadlines. And I think the last important topic, we did talk about the budget. Can't really speak much to it, but we did have a discussion around salary increases and the 25 to 26 school year staffing plans. And that is all. The next committee meeting will be Monday, April 21st, 6:30 p.m. Questions? Comments? Good.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone. We'll now move to the action portion of the meeting. Are there, just so I know, are there any severs? No? Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Moody, can you please read the resolutions into record, and then we'll be open for discussion?
Sure, President Duval Wilson. Essentially, we'll be reviewing for action items 4736 through 4746, and then there are also two additional hand carries, so.
Well, does it have anything you want to add?
Now, just to highlight really briefly, as Board Member Sackett Gabel noted, within our finance resolution is a donation of, I believe it was $3,000, the Achieve Foundation to continue the work that the Steam Tank is doing in the middle school, the tremendous work they did recently around MMS, and we, you know, love to see that happen and always appreciate the donations in the Achieve Foundation. We also had a great donation from T.S. Swanson, from an anonymous donor, for a few musical instruments, which are always welcome and encouraged. You'll note that there was a transfer within our funds. Beyond the Bell Fund, which is also called the Latchkey Program, had been run by the district, of course. Recently, that was handed off, and now is a program operated by the YMCA. We had some money left over just sitting in our account from that. That was now pushed over to the general fund for application elsewhere. And as Board Member Callahan noted, Board Member Sackett Gabel is being welcomed onto our Special Services Committee, which originally had been organized with just three members. We're happy to have a fourth. And lastly, we are adopting a corrective action plan for attendance at Columbia High School. We've had a few schools that have had corrective action plans that we've adopted, required by law. Certainly, we want to address the attendance issues and make sure that we have our kids in seats and ready to learn, and that's something the district has been already addressing, and this memorializes it in a plan as required by the state.
I also want to highlight the committee update on our chart. When I spoke with Board Member Callahan about this, I wanted to make sure she knew that I didn't purposely put only three people on special services. I was, my name was the fourth. And as a leader, I think it's always good to know when you might be pushing it a little bit too much, and so I took myself out. And I did, I did attend a special services meeting. I think it was the one in January, and, you know, we've had Bill, and so having that rotating scene isn't, doesn't create consistency, and so I was happy that we were able to have Board Member Sackett Gabel join, and thank you. And I'm happy with not being on, because I've got a lot of other stuff I got to do. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on those items? Okay, are you ready for a roll call vote? Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Sackett Gabel?
Yes.
All right.
Great. And then we have two hand carries. So do you want to do Resolution 4747, the appeal? First?
4747 first.
Okay, great.
4747 first, and then 4748.
Great, thanks.
So for Resolution 4747, Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member, Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
And Board Member Sackett Gabel?
Yes.
And then finally, for 4748, Board Member Sackett Gabel?
Yes.
Board Member Meyer?
Yes.
Board Member Kapadia?
Yes.
Board Member Gifford?
Yes.
Board Member Eckert?
Yes.
Board President Duval Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Callahan?
Yes.
Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Board Member Bennett?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now would be the time for, that concludes action portion of the meeting, and now would be time for the second hearing of individuals and delegates. Do we have any? No? Okay, let me see online. No? Okay. Okay, so then that brings us to new business. And also, I meant to give an update on this after our last meeting, but new business is for things that are pressing matters that we would need to vote on tonight if there was something that were immediately needed. And I feel like for the new board members, I never really properly explained that. But yeah, so if there's something pressing, that would be a new business item. We typically don't have them. No? Okay, great. So I'll read future meetings. The Board of Education will meet again in public session on Thursday, April 24, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. Action will be taken. Mr. Moody, I will now, I would now like to motion to adjourn this meeting on Thursday, March 27 at 9:32 p.m. May I have a second? Second? Thank you, Board Member Brown. All in favor? Great, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.